All this meeting in order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. This is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, February 5th, February 5th, 2019. We're going to move right into the consent agenda. This is approval of payroll for January 25th, 2019. Approval of claims, January 24th, 2019. Waits and measures, monthly report filed for December 16th, 2018 to January 15th, 2019. Open up the floor. Or no, we've got to do the Memorial Opera House and all that at one time, right? So, next we're going to move on to consent agenda Memorial Opera House, and I'm going to turn that over to Commissioner Beany for that part.
All right. We've got a venue rental agreement for Echoes of Pompeii, and then all the rest of these 21 names I read are for artistic services agreements. Madeline Bogacy, Angela Hyde, John Peluso, Christopher Hadad, Deborah Trumbicki Hadad, Christopher Hadad, Dan Houston, Brian Sanoshi, Stephanie Reader, Patrick Jansen, Chris Lauer, Nick DeJarly, Jennifer Nelson, Joe Vilani, Anna Anderson, Mark Webster, Chris Staubbaum, Madeline Woodrow Hadeen, Chris Hadad, Jordan Ramersberger, and Bethany Borgo.
So that is the consent agenda. I'll open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have motion and second for consent agenda as written. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Get this up. Here we go. Okay. New business. Real quick, I would just like to make a big announcement. The day, about 15 minutes after the last commissioners meeting, I became a first-time grandpa. So I think that's real important to let people know. County business keeps on moving, but I'm a grandpa. So, that's my new business announcement. It's not really business, but... So now we're going to move right into the commissioners meeting. Tony Bonträger from RE Sutton is going to come up and give us an update on where we're at with our employee health insurance. Morning, Tony.
Morning. Congratulations.
I'm bringing it by.
Why do we do this?
Exactly.
You know, this was ahead of time, but you've got some hard copies as well.
Yeah, we got it.
You do?
I need one.
Okay.
I didn't prep mine. I'm trying to save on paper.
We can get you a new one. Just call her.
Thank you.
I don't print it.
That's all right.
Okay. Thank you. So, obviously, we made some pretty big changes last spring, so we're coming up with the first renewal since those changes have been in place. Overall, I think it's gone really, really well, and it continues to continue to look better ongoing. So we'll have some recommendations moving forward and a few things. You know, after we get that first full year under our belt and all the prior claims out of our experience period, we'll really be able to start diving into the data a little bit better right now, because right now we're trying to pull data from two sources, and prior sources are a little bit harder to get data from and match up. So, but with that, everything is tracking really, really well along those lines. So if you flip that packet open, the very first page in there is a comparative report looking at calendar year 2017 compared with calendar year 2018. So obviously, in 2018, we've got January, February, and March of 2018 that you were still with the prior setup with BAS and Inetico. So that's still part of that kind of experience period, but those are obviously starting to filter out. We should have January claims in about any day now. So what this report really tries to look at is just see on a rolling 12-month basis, what trends are we seeing on an aggregate basis? So if you can look down to bottom in yellow and green, and I'll make some other notes as well. You can show, it'll show kind of the averages with a per employee per month, P E P M there. You can see your enrollment is up 1.7%, so that's pretty good. Slow, steady growth is good. Collecting a good risk pool. You can see on average, we've got 546 versus in the prior 12 months, we had 537. That's the number of employees on the plan. The next couple of columns there show your max and expected claims, and then your medical claims. These are actual gross paid medical claims. They're down 7.2%. Your prescription is up at 5.5 right now. Dental's down 16 and 1/2. You can see that adjustments column. That was something that you had really with that BAS and some different things in that contract that were made. You can see that is zeroed out now. Claims over specific, we don't currently have anybody in the current contract that's hit the specific stop loss. And so when you add together all your claims, subtract out the claims over specific stop loss, you can see your net medical and R X claims are down 1/2%. So when you blend all that out, really, so that's flat. Really, overall, minus 1/2% I would consider is pretty flat.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the important part here is that we're looking at claims paid. We're zeroing in on the last nine or 10 months. But to be clear, those months probably include, or do include, past claims from BAS.
Correct.
And so, I know that's confusing to most, but at the end of the day, we're still probably another... When we sit here next year this time, we won't have the interference with the numbers of those lagging BAS claims.
Correct. And I try to filter that out in a couple of other columns as well, as I've made some notes on mine that I'll go over. But yeah, so you over here, even including those three months, when you look at that report, those were some pretty big months, January, February, and March with BAS. So that's tainting your current 12 months really, too. If I, this is a side note that I had, your, an average month from April through December is just over $604,000. An average month in your last contract was $714,000. So if you kind of isolate, try to isolate some of that, your new contract versus the old, not blend them together, it's down 15%. So it's just, that's kind of getting tainted with those last few months from the prior contract. So you can see that percentage of expected column. Again, and as we go through the renewal, I'll talk a little bit about it, too. If you look at your last two or three years under the prior setup, you know, we pay attention to it. It's a projection, but that's what you use to budget on as well. You are continually coming in over expected. So essentially, when stop loss and everything was being done, it was artificially lowered as far as what your expected costs were going to be. You're running just, you're running about 95% of what's expected under your current contract, meaning your projections now are becoming much more accurate, as opposed to lowballing it in to make it maybe look better on paper than what it's probably going to end up being. So that's just as we looked over the last few years, you are continually coming in over what was projected.
And that was about 115% of projected.
Yeah.
It's on the average, and now we're running about 95.
Correct.
And still early.
In the current contract, yeah.
With a 20% swing on big numbers.
Yep. So the next column there, estimated fixed costs. You can see the fixed costs are down about $120,000. In the prior 12 months, it was just under 1.1, and we're at about $980,000 in the most recent 12 months. So that's a 12.3% decrease, so we're saving on the claims as well as the fixed costs as well. So you can see total costs, when you blend everything together there, we're down 2.4%. But again, you can see the January, February, and March, those are pretty hefty months up top. So as those filter out, that number will become better. The year-to-date costs, so that's looking at contract year-to-date, that far-right column. So if you look at December of '17, it's taking in total what the first nine months of that contract was at $695,000 versus the current contract, the first nine months, that's 600, or $6,340,000, sorry, $6.995 million versus $6.34 million. So contract year-to-date, if we're, again, isolating the contracts and not bringing them together, we're $600,000 better off through December than what we were in the prior 12 months, or the prior nine months. So overall, again, things are tracking really well since that renewal, April 1st, 2018. So, and they'll continue to do that as we get that backend kind of pushed out. So, does that report make sense? There's a lot there, but it's a very high-level aggregate report. As, again, as we get more data from UMR and everything, you'll start to see a little bit more detail about what the claims entail, but it just gets skewed a little bit in a short timeframe, too. So, any questions on that?
Tony, I have a question.
Yeah.
Were claims cost for BAS, were they adjusted for the stop loss reimbursements?
Yeah. Yep. So the claims over specific, those are all adjusted for the stop loss reimbursements.
Okay. Okay, cool. Thanks.
Yep. Those get subtracted out. So if there's a large claim, on this report, we pull out the claims that were over that threshold. So...
So the good news here is we're trending down, and this, these numbers are even before we have even any of the clinic results.
Correct.
That we started January 1st. So with the clinic and the high take that we hope that our employees will start doing, that should continue to march those numbers down.
Yep.
Depending on the take of the clinic, correct?
Correct. Correct. Yep.
Well, I think the number, the one up number we had was prescriptions, and that was about a 5.5% increase.
5.5%, yes.
The clinic will, if utilized, should have a direct impact on those prescription costs.
Correct. Yep.
I mean, it should on claims also, but directly on the prescription costs.
Correct. Yep.
Tony, I see on your spreadsheet here, when you get into adjustments and claims over specific, those, ever since we switched over from Inetico to UMR, we're now showing zeros in that category. So we're not having a ton of adjustments.
Correct.
Accounting work that's going on all the time, back and forth. This new plan will sort of clean along that up.
Yeah, it's a little bit more straightforward. So your last, those adjustments came in because they were, depending on the negotiation and where those negotiations were done and everything, you were...
And that's how that was done, as we were expecting.
Yeah. Yeah. It was built in prior, but it's a little more straightforward.
But with those zeros now, what that does is that gives us much more confidence in our ability to budget.
Correct.
Which should help the council and all other entities that tie into this. So that's a big thing. I know it doesn't, it doesn't sound like that, but we're starting to hone in on not only reducing the cost, but also being better board.
It made things lag and drag out.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, and we've seen...
That's why we're still paying Inetico and BAS claims.
Yeah. Yeah.
Nine months after.
Well, I mean, there was just one settled from 2016. I mean, so there's still lag in some of that. So, but that'll filter out.
One of the inherent issues with the cost.
Yeah. Okay. The next page in there is just a high-level summary of benefits. That went out last fall and last spring as well, but kind of high-level summary of benefits. The next piece in there at the top, Porter County Government Health Plan Cost Comparison. So this is your medical and prescription drug summary here. This is, kind of gets detailed line by line. If you think of this from a budgeting perspective, this is looking at what are the expected costs of running the medical and prescription drug program for the next contract, which is April 1st, 2019 through March 31st, 2020. So I'm not going to walk down through line by line on all those line items there. Across the board, though, you can see the total admin fixed costs are really pretty flat. There's a small adjustment in there for a PCOY fee, which is a healthcare reform-related fee that goes to the federal government. You're not getting really anything for it, but it's a fee to the federal government that all groups have to play, have to pay. Your reinsurance carrier is currently HCC, and you can see a cost there. We did bid this out and got multiple options for you, and at the end of the day, I think they still provided a pretty good option for us. Your specific stop loss deductible is currently $150,000. You do have what's called an aggregating specific deductible. And if you look down the contract type, 2412, we do adjust to what's called a 3612. So that just means that any claims incurred since actually 4-1, 2018 will be included under this, under this stop loss contract. So that's good. It is good. Yep. Yep.
That's an important tidbit.
Yes. And you can see there's a, the current, the renewal, HCC initial. So they came out with kind of an initial offer. We went to market, and then you can see how they did adjust their offer just with market feedback and going back and forth negotiating. So that's kind of that middle column there, the HCC firm. And then the next one, renewal UMR Optum. If you kind of zone in on those two, those are the two main ones. The other ones didn't come back competitive and/or declined to firm up their quote. Specific premium composite currently $10676. Initial off the door, it was a 15% increase on that. Through the bid process, we were able to get that to actually a 5.9% decrease, just based upon market, as well as you sent out the initial renewal, and it's got more prior data in it. And then you let a month or two go by, and you get more updated claims. So they are able to firm up and look to see a little bit more up-to-date data, so that helps as well. Your quarter, 120%. Aggregate premium composite currently 610, going to 671. Shows a 10% increase. That's a fairly small dollars, though. Total reinsurance fixed costs. So overall, if you look at it as a package deal, you can see HCC is at $10717, which is a 5% decrease in stop loss costs. Optum is at $10514, which is a minus 6.8. If you go to total annual fixed costs, so this is the cost of running, running the plan essentially. If nobody walks into the doctor's office next contract, this is the cost of having everything reinsured properly. It's the cost of having UMR, all those types of things. Total annual fixed costs currently $918,000, going down to $881,000, which is a 4.1% decrease. Optum is 867, so a little bit lower. But again, their contract isn't quite as strong. It's comparable, but maybe not quite as strong, as well as if you take into account max costs, max exposure underneath. I think the recommendation from us would be to stay with HCC. So those are your total annual fixed costs. If you look below that, under claim costs, these are the projections from the underwriters as to what we, as what we and they think your claims are actually going to be next year. Again, this used to be put out, and then you were consistently coming in over what was expected. You're going to trail much closer to this in the normal year. That's not to say you're not going to have one year where it spikes back up or dips way down. But generally speaking, you're going to, on average, in an average year, you're going to trail much closer to this. So you can see the expected claims factor holding flat there with HCC, up 0.7% from Optum. So if you go to total expected costs, currently $8,570,000. The original renewal, $8,694,000. After the renewal process negotiation, it's $8,534,000, which is a minus 0.4%. So overall, really flat renewal from a budgeting perspective of what we think. Again, keep in mind, we still have some of those, the run-out claims, as well as those first three months in your experience period when they're doing those projections. One thing we were able to pick up this year with HCC, though, as well with the, through the bid process, because others had looked at it, is a refunding option. So right now, with your stop loss, and this is, more stop loss carriers are starting to offer this, you pay a lot of money to reinsure the plan against a large claim. They're coming out with refund options. So if you meet certain targets as far as loss ratios, or if you have a good year, you can actually be refunded some of that money back. So that's good. We're able to get that in there, along with that decrease in premium. So I was happy to see that they got that in there. It may or may not pay anything, depending on the type of year you have, but hey, it's in there, and it could be money back if you have a good year. So, and thus far this year, you're having a pretty good year. So that's good to see. One thing, UMR recommending, and I agree with, there's just a slight change to the plan, capping the non-network, capping the, let me make sure I read this correctly, the non-network air ambulance at $25,000. Obviously, air ambulance, you don't really get to choose who you pick in that unfortunate situation, but there are, in some instances, where it can be planned out a little bit if they're transferring or something like that. And so capping that at $25,000 is a recommendation, and I would do that. This is going to come into play few and far between, but if it's non-network, you see those bills, they just, they just jack them way up, and then you're kind of just held to where you're at there. So recommend that, that minor change is made. Again, it probably won't come into play, but it's a recommendation from UMR as well as the stop loss companies. Just that we're starting to see more of that. So, so with that, that's good overall. The next page is your dental. No change to the dental. That was a, what about your agreement on that as far as the administration fees? So no change there. The next page, the plan renewal considerations, where we kind of tie everything together. You can see at the top here, your current annual premium generated. This is based upon your COBRA rates. So I know the county budgets, budgets a little bit differently than using the COBRA rates, but generally speaking, this is also to look to see what should we do with COBRA rates. So currently, $9,270,000. Current expected liability, $8,897,000. And that's your medical plus, medical, prescription, and dental. Current max liability, $10,408,000. Underneath that, you can see renewal expected liability. If you go to the UMR HCC column there, $8,862,000. So again, dropping down just a little bit there. Overall, your funding is really solid. Your COBRA rates are solid. So really, I'd recommend no change to your COBRA rates, your funding. As far as budgeted costs, really flat overall for the next year. So happy to answer any questions on that, or anything else you might have.
Yeah, Tony, on that, sort of revisit the capping of the non-network ambulance thing.
Yeah.
Who, is, is the employee responsible for that, or is that something that's sort of figured in to the meat grinder type of thing?
Yeah, that would go through.
Are there things that our people need to know about that?
Yeah.
There needs to be some outreach and some educational stuff with that. So it's sort of confusing to me.
Yeah. Yeah. So I would say that, I mean, it'll be updated in the plan document. So it will be there contractually. Not that anybody truly reads all 100 pages of the plan document. I realize that. It's really there for protection of the plan, but also the member as well. And at the end of the day, if it goes through and they're sticking their guns as non-network, the plan can make an adjustment at that point to it as well. But ultimately, it's to have language in place, and you go back to those non-network providers, say, hey.
Help them negotiate it.
You know, this is usual and customary cap here.
Okay.
You're charging way in excess of what's usual and customary. So it's really to help start that negotiation process, too.
And also the employees, if we, if there is some issue that's caused a air ambulance emergency.
Correct.
Out of network, that is going to go above $25,000, chances are, in whatever plan they're in, they've already hit their stop loss.
Yeah, they've hit their, they've hit their stop loss. And emergency claims process at a network, too. So that, from the members' perspective, this is more of a plan protection from the perspective that, hey, we've got language in place that says we can't go above this. And so from a negotiation standpoint, helps from that perspective.
Got it. Yeah. Thanks, Tony.
Only thing I have is that this board has continually said at the end of the day, health insurance is claims, okay? And I think the number that dropped off, the two numbers that jumped off for me was, we're looking at the UMR, and then H, I think it's HCC's firm on the stop loss. I mean, it can't hardly be any clearer than projected is $8.5 million, give or take. And the claims are projected at 8 point, I mean, excuse me, $7.5. So at the end of the day, on an $8.5 million projected plan, $7.5 million of it's pure claim.
Yeah.
And I think that might be important later on. I think, assuming we're getting to talk a little bit more about the clinic, so, but that's the correlation. At the end of the day, that's where...
Yeah. The claims, claims drive your costs. I mean, fixed costs are important. We watch those because those are hard dollars. You're going to spend those no matter what. You know, this is, it's great to see a decrease on your specific. It's, that is, that's the biggest piece of the, of your fixed cost, is your specific premium. So it's good to see that decrease there. Not overly common to see decreases there, but as your experience has increased, they're seeing less risk, essentially is what it is.
Well, we're definitely on the right path. I mean, it wasn't that, as we all know, it wasn't that long ago. We're, the county council, the commissioners were in front of the county council, not this board, but a recent board, you know, asking for as much as $12 million to fund the health insurance program. So we are definitely on the upswing here.
Yeah. Over time, you guys have made some, some really good changes. I know, obviously, the BAS-Inetico thing, I think it, it was a, overall, in hindsight, probably a good change to kind of reset your plan.
It was a transitional move that we had to make.
Yeah. And it did.
For its purpose.
Yep. So, but I think you can see, based upon the changes that were made, you're continuing down that path. And it's good for your members, too, as far as the new structure, I think.
Makes it much easier to understand.
Understand, and from our office, and I, Rhonda can speak for herself, but I think less questions coming in from members as to, hey, what's going on with this? And obviously, with the transition, there were some questions and some bumps in the road with that as any transition, but overall, I think it's, I think it's gone really well.
When I see zero for eight months of adjustments.
Yeah.
I mean, that, we all know who took care of those, right? I mean, it was a lot of work.
We do still have some adjustments. It's just that they're processing it different way.
Right. Yeah.
And now we see them as part of the claims register.
Right. Yep.
And they're kind of rolled into that. So it's not like a separate refund of monies. It's more so rolled into a separate process.
Yep.
So we still see them. It's just not as apparent.
And the adjustments now are more maybe reconciliations, whereas before, adjustments were more, hey, we negotiated a contract, and so they get a portion of that.
They wouldn't pay you.
Yeah. So, and adjustments didn't, didn't apply to stop loss. So there's just different things contractually that are now different, that I think are much better.
Any other questions from the board? I guess it's, I guess it's really up to the board on whether we want to take action on this renewal today, or if we want to wait till the next. We finally have time for once to make this decision, which is about three years later, all the work. But if there's other questions that the board members need to have, we can take the next three weeks and assimilate some questions towards Tony and get those answered, or we can move on it right now. It's, I just wanted to give the board that option today.
Whatever you, Commissioner Beany, would like to do, it's fine with me.
Well, we're not really probably going to change anything.
No, I, based on these numbers, but I just didn't know. I wanted to give the board members any other, some additional time. If there's any other questions, that's really all I'm asking. So...
So if there is a motion made, we need one motion for the air ambulance issue and plan change, correct?
To, to adjust.
To adjust to the $25,000.
To plan document, yeah.
To adjust the plan document. And we also need, if we're going to move forward with the motion, to call out, it's the, you're recommending the UMR HCC.
Firm. Yep. The one that they're, I mean, that's their initial offer. Their actual offer on the table now is that, the one that's firm. Yeah.
Which is third column.
Correct. The middle.
Right here.
Yep.
For some reason, I thought there was a third thing, but I think it's just the air ambulance and...
That's it, from an action standpoint, just a couple of general updates, but from an action standpoint, that would be.
So the one with amend, so we should do the...
Do it in two motions.
I'll make a motion to approve the UMR HCC firm renewal.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for renewal of the United Healthcare, UMR HCC firm bid for the county for the year 4-1, 2019 through 3-31, 2020. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. And...
And then I'll make a motion to limit, to put into the contract to limit the usual and customary rate of the air ambulance to $25,000.
Out of, out of network.
Out of network.
Out of network. Yep. Second. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Tony.
Yep.
I know you're sitting here for the next thing, but it's, we're starting to see rewards.
Yeah. And again, I talked to Scott just a little bit, and in general, again, as we get more and more down the road and have one payer of claims coming from UMR, definitely want to come back and talk to you about some different options as far as what we can do with data. There's a lot, a lot more things we can do with data once we can get a clean slate.
Yeah.
You know, it's messy right now, but ultimately, I think there's some really good things that we're seeing in the marketplace with being able to really go through the data. Not, not that you would see any members' particular information or names or anything, but really just looking at the group to see where, where are the sore spots in this, especially now that you have a clinic that can help address some of those. That's really where you can start to parlay those into, into good savings, because it's one thing for Tony Bonträger to look at a report and see, okay, we've got an issue here, but to be able to team with the clinic to address some of those clinically, that's, that's where the big difference will be made. So we'll continue down that path once we can kind of flush out some of the prior, prior claims.
Yes. You know, when you first come on, as you remember, you had emphasized the lack of this data that we didn't, you know, we didn't have, and it was hurting us, because we didn't have, you know, that particular type of data. So it's, it's good, it's, you know...
Yep. I'm getting there.
Well, now we have the data to actually maybe go analyze.
Yeah. Yep.
Which is, at the end of the day, is what you're going to be asking for.
Yeah. Yep.
Or just, at that point, I mean, we were just flying by the seat of our pants without that.
Yeah. I mean, having the multiple TPAs in the past, overall, I think BAS was, they were trying to manage that the way that it was structured. I think good intent overall with the plan and everything. I think there was just, it made things a little bit hard to track in certain areas and get reports on.
Yeah. Well, you remember, three, four years ago, our Stuart C. Miller was our processor, and they didn't do anything electronically. It was all paper. So when you go back out to the markets to bid, you had no data, which is sort of what we were...
And we're seeing less lingering claims going on. That's a big, first stop... That's a big, for a stop loss company, that's a, that's a big question mark for them, or what's out there that I don't know about.
Right.
So that's a, that helps.
At this point, Rhonda, could you maybe come forward and maybe just give us a real brief update on the clinic? I know that's not on the agenda, but we're talking about health insurance. This is a real important component that we started beginning of the year this year. Obviously, everybody knows we're, for coughs, scrapes, whatever, we prefer to go to the clinic versus a claim which takes our insurance up. So why don't you, since we started it, just give us a brief update on where we're at and how it's going.
It's pretty busy, the clinics, both sites, the one about those portage, they're busy all the time. They're doing really well. Have you got the latest number?
I didn't.
The rest one was 16.
Yeah, I didn't see the percentages or anything for January, usually a week or two in.
It's rolled up.
Yep. So, yeah, we'll start to get those reports, say, here's, here's where we're at, how many visits we've seen. I know that, I think the first, the very first day, we had 16 visits, which was.
People are going there, I mean, all the time.
That's what we need.
Yeah.
And I've heard some compliments from people too about it, which usually you don't hear that up here.
Right. Something to do.
Right.
But they're loving it, they're going there and they, I think the employees had a hard time understanding that it doesn't have anything to do with UMR.
Right.
It's an added benefit. So once they've got that, they've kind of tended it, they're loving it.
Good, good. Thank you, Rhonda.
Yeah, appreciate all the employees for giving it a try.
Yeah.
We still, I'm just still going to challenge the employees, though we still have that 60% threshold that we're trying to get to because we really feel when we get to that 60% usage, that's when we're really going to be, for our whole program, will be at maximum capacity. That's when the engine is running at, running at its best. And that's the bogey we're trying to get to. So we'll be, as, as this rolls out, we'll be coming in these meetings, giving updates on percentage of takes so we can bring you all along with us to show us where we're at and where we need to go. That's what goals are for, so, but I think we have a clear path. Next up, we have short-term disability presentation. And thank you, Tony, for everything. We have GIS coming in front of us for short-term disability. This is a presentation as well. And Scott, I don't know if you wanted to set the table at all about this or?
Well, the issue of the short-term disability has come up once the health insurance plan was seeming to be on the right track. And today, obviously, we're getting some confirmation of that. The next step was to deal with, in conjunction with the handbook being rewritten for countywide, that being adopted in December and January of this year, dealing and tackling the next kind of issue out there, which is our, our sick bank, which is basically an in-house version of short-term disability. So after some of those other issues were taken care of, we went, we wanted to see kind of what the cost would be to move into a more traditional short-term disability offering for the employees. And so that's why we went back to GIS, because we have a relationship with them as far as our other insurance for auto and things like that. So they produced for us and went to the market. And I think at this point, he can go through the report and kind of give us the who we talked to, who responded, who didn't, and what ultimately the recommendation is.
Absolutely. So first of all, I'm Eric with GIS here in town. Thank you for the opportunity to pull this together for you guys, we really appreciate it. So basically, what you guys are looking at here, the first page is the overview. I highlighted the sections we're really going to zero in on. As you can see, we went to multiple different carriers. It quickly became kind of a two-horse race here with Lincoln Financial and MetLife, mainly because you guys just have no data, no experience. So it's, it's a little bit of a, you know, toss up to how they're going to see this. My personal recommendation would be to go with MetLife specifically for a couple of reasons. One, the pricing, and then, two, the actual contract terms are much more favorable for your employees. The 31-day elimination period coincides with your, with your internal policies. So that solves that. And if you actually want to go through the details of the policy, flip to the next page for me. Let's see, MetLife, so the, the question here, we've got a few different options for each of the carriers. You've got Lincoln Financial and you've got MetLife, I highlighted both of those. You've got the difference between 60% of your pay for your benefit or 67% of your pay for benefit. Not a huge difference price-wise, as you can see, but totally up to you guys. But the main difference between Lincoln Financial and MetLife is the pre-existing condition clause and how that benefits the employees. So as I mentioned, MetLife was much more favorable from that.
Did they have any carve-outs in there or anything for that?
Nope. Nope.
So on page three of the handout.
So page three is actually voluntary long-term disability.
All right.
Yeah.
So that's page two.
Yep.
So basically, the commissioners are looking at probably, like you said, the Lincoln Financial versus the MetLife. And I think when we were kind of working through these numbers, we were aiming for that 67% reimbursement rate as the prices are not significantly different.
Right.
And then ultimately, once that decision was made by the commissioners, and then we're down to which one, basically, at this point, we believe MetLife's pre-existing exclusions is a little bit more favorable.
Absolutely. So the, the difference is really, MetLife is only going to look back three months and Lincoln Financial wants to look back 12 months for pre-existing.
And also, I know this is a little off, but when we, when we did our resolution for the sick bank, the sick bank resolution froze the addition of, of time to be added. However, that resolution included that the sick bank remains in effect up until this is not only chosen, contracted, enrolled, but active.
Yep.
So that sick bank isn't technically going all the way away, assuming a motion's made and it's passed until we're past some of these roadblocks for the employees. So when you brought up the 90, was it 90-day wait period or 90-day look back?
Yeah, that was, yeah.
Right. So if we went with MetLife and we have a 90-day look back for pre-existing, then our sick banks, the commissioners are aware, would continue on for 90 days past whatever that lasts, you know, so that 90 days has elapsed. So that we're not, we don't have a lapse in protection for the employees until this is in full force and effect.
What do they mean exactly by, other than the obvious, pre-existing?
Sure, so anything that's been treated or diagnosed within that, that window. So in MetLife's case, that, that three months.
So if you, if you were treated for high blood pressure or diabetes or whatever, within that three month, month window, they would not.
So that specific condition would not be, would be considered pre-existing, so they wouldn't cover that specific condition.
But it's for disability, remember, not just regular.
Right. But still, I mean, yeah, I understand that, but if, if they, if they would go file for short-term disability, say if it was a diabetic or somebody with high blood pressure.
Sure. So the pre-existing exclusion is only for 12 months. So that three-month look back is excluded for 12 months. After that 12 months, then it's treated as.
So if they signed up today and they filed something four months later.
Yep.
And it was something that they have been treated for, for the last two or three years, they would be covered, correct?
No.
No.
Because they've been previously treated within that window.
But in 13 months, they will be.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that means that the sick bank would stay in effect for a full year then?
90 days.
90 days.
30 days for the look back, but you're saying that for 12 months, that would be excluded.
So that's, yeah, anything that's been treated within that 90 days would be excluded for 12 months on this specific policy.
Right, okay. Plus that needing to high blood pressure.
But it has to be related to whatever the new short-term disability issue is.
Exactly.
So I'm not sure diabetes or high blood pressure gets us to what a short-term disability looks like, right? I mean, we're actually talking about.
It would be, you know, you're shoveling your driveway, you pull your back, you go into the doctor for that.
Right.
You're not going to go out on disability, you know, as soon as this policy is enforced for that exact same condition. They're not going to allow that for 12 months. Right.
So if you, if you, if you have strained your knee in the 90 days before this, then that may be an exclusion.
Correct.
What if you had a knee, having a knee replacement excluded?
Same, yeah.
Six, yeah.
Same situation.
Could you explain to us real quick the participation rate? Just so I'm clear, everybody's clear here what that means exactly.
Absolutely. So MetLife is requiring that you guys have at least 50% participation rate from the employees for these rates to hold. So they're just saying, if you guys have less than that, we're going to revisit this because we've got to.
Yeah, I would be a little uneasy selecting Lincoln for that reason alone. I, I, I think we'd struggle getting to a 75% rate.
They're also more expensive.
And they're more expensive.
Well, I would make a motion to contract with MetLife Financial at the 67% benefit rate.
A second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second and discussion.
What's the terms of that contract? I mean, 12 months, is it?
One year.
Yes.
It's one year at the bottom there.
Okay, I didn't see that, yeah.
Now, Scott, you want to go over what, how this works for the employee and what the county's going to pick up and what the employee has to pick up, right? I know you're doing your math.
So based on Commissioner Blaney's motion, we went with MetLife Financial at the 67% rate, assuming, assuming basically 100% of our, is this number based on 50%?
It's based on 100%.
But it's based on 100% participation, correct?
Right.
So 100% participation, participation rate, according to my math, has us at about $89,863 for the year, right? Because this number, the $7,488, that's our monthly.
Right.
So as we were previously kind of figuring out how to deal with this, if the, the commissioners were considering somewhere around a 65% payment rate. So that would pay, assuming 100% participation, about $58,411, which leaves about $31,452 that the employees, based on 100% participation, would be participating with. And so in the census number that you had at 100%, remember that number? Was it around?
Number of employees, 611.
So basically, that's $51.50 a year or $1.97 a paycheck. Based, if the commissioners went with the 65% contribution, that would be what the, the average across the board employee would be paying.
It's substantially more, or less than what I'm paying.
So, so to be clear, from the commissioner's standpoint, if 100% of the employees signed up for this, we would be looking at about a $58,411 bill for 12 months. And that would translate into an employee contribution of about $1.97, $2 of pay. And that would get us to having this in effect. So did we vote on Commissioner Blaney's motion?
We're still in discussion.
All right.
So let me get this straight now. If we don't get 100% participation and we get 65%, well, let's, that, that number can go up, right?
No. The cost number, this is 100%. Everybody does it. So if we get, let's say we're over the 50% contribution, I mean, participation, say we're at 70%, well, basically, this number's going down 30%.
Yeah, it'll be.
I got you.
Our overall number's going.
I was going the other way.
Yes.
All right, got it. I just want to make sure your employees understand that.
But employees will still be paying around $2.
Right.
The kind of, add to what Commissioner Good was saying, say we get to 40%. We're stuck at 40%, what happens then?
So we go back to MetLife and we try to negotiate these exactly right.
And then we also send HR out to make sure everybody fully understands the option available so they're trying to make the most informed decision they can.
They go back to the algorithm guy, right?
It really is a good deal.
Exactly.
And I guess last but not least is the issue of the sick bank. And I don't want to get too deep into the sick bank, but the sick bank was a creation that was probably good in its time. And as things have changed, HIPAA laws, et cetera, it's exceedingly difficult to manage the sick bank request in a manner in which you're compliant with any semblance of the HIPAA law. Some real built-in deficiencies within that sick bank. To be clear, the commissioners started with, let's try to fix the sick bank. It became clear that, that there was almost no path to making the sick bank work in a way that was compliant. That's why we switched and pivoted towards a short-term disability potential option. So this isn't, this is attempting to kind of mitigate other liabilities of the county, but also to add the benefit for the employees so that it's, it's not something that disappears and for the commissioners to pay as much as possible to keep the cost as low as possible for the employees moving forward. So that's kind of, you know, where we're at. And I guess my last thing of the sick bank is, besides the HIPAA challenges, I guess I'll put it like, you know, the other problem was, is when the sick bank was originally created, it allowed for days to be donated. However, no money flowed with those days. So we have a column somewhere that says we have so many days donated, but below that column, there's actually no funds that had, were ever moved. And that wasn't just, that just wasn't part of the original way that that program was put together. So it's just a weird conglomeration of issues that kind of led us to here. And ultimately, while HR and the commissioners were working on the handbook, we were looking forward to the possibility of having the short-term disability. And that's kind of why some of the provisions of how much time people can gather up or kind of hold back for these issues is to, we were trying to make it all work together as one cohesive plan, and this is kind of the last step of that.
Yeah, and our, our new manual, we don't have sick days anymore, we have PTO. So, so really, by moving to PTO, the sick bank is just sort of sitting out there in limbo because we're not doing sick days anymore. So this is just sort of the icing on the cake of our final employee benefit plan for our employees. And I can tell you, there's not a lot of companies out there that, that do disability for their employees. So I, I think if you take the UMR that we just acted on, you take the clinic that we just acted on the beginning of the year, and now, this is the icing on the cake, the last piece. Now we have a benefit program that ties into our employee manual, which makes it easier for the auditor and HR to manage this process because it's all down in writing and it's pretty much fixed. So it's, it's, we've done it in multiple moves and I, I just think it's, it's the best way to go. And for $2 a paycheck, that's some really nice security to have if you're an employee here, so.
And ultimately, we set up, I'll just be blunt, we set the handbook up that you, the employees can build up 30 days of paid time off so that they can bridge to this short-term disability, so.
And you don't have a third of the building knowing your business as to why you're needing that time off.
That goes back under my HIPAA compliance.
That's what you have now. That's what you have now. Well, we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any other discussion?
Did you amend your motion to include the 65%?
65%.
Contribution from the county?
Oh, does that need to be part of the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I will amend my motion to include the fact that the county will contribute 65% of the total cost.
Do you have a-
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, an amended motion and a second. A call to vote. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. You now have short-term disability Porter County employees. That's big.
Please get with HR and let's figure out when we're going to do the enrollment and get that all set up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work on that, too. Okay, hopefully, we're going to start moving things on a little bit. I know we've had a pretty busy schedule here today, but there are a lot of people that we're wanting on this February 5th agenda, too, and I think now you see why we wouldn't let any more on here. We're going to move now to amend- amended, we're going to be talking about amending ordinance 96-4 and 14-07, which is Frost Law, and this is first reading. We have the Highway Department in front of us and the Sheriff's Department here, so-
So-
Good morning, gentlemen.
I have the lucky chance to meet both with Highway and with representatives of the Sheriff's Department in trying to simplify, make the Frost Law a little bit more straightforward, a little bit easier to enforce, but not lose the ultimate issue, which is that we all know that we have certain times of- somewhere between January and April where we need to put into effect the Frost Law. So in multiple meetings with the administration of the Highway Department, we've kind of walked our way through this, and then kind of, what I'm attempting to do is, our current Frost Law is a conglomeration of three ordinances, 96-4, 14-08, and 14-07. This isn't a- what I'm doing here is repealing those and then restating back in one kind of cohesive way the new Frost Law. To walk through it kind of generally, a lot of the same language and a lot of the same issues are now- are still within this Frost Law, or this proposed Frost Law, as were in the others, except again, we're just trying to make this a little bit more simplified and a little bit more cohesive. So basically, this would allow, by this- if this ordinance passes, the Highway Superintendent would have the authority during that January 1st to April 1st time period, based upon judgment, road constriction, road issues, and weather, to put in the Frost Law on and off when needed. We were anticipating having the signs up, or making those permanent over the next 12 to 24 months, so we don't have to keep putting them up and taking them down. We're going to also have on those signs a website. We've talked to Mr. Ellis about potentially having a website that that way, when you see the sign, the sign says the Frost Law is basically in effect from January, could be in effect from January 1st to April 1st, but to get more details, go to www.somethingfrostlaw for Porter County. And then that way, we don't have to be continually using so much manpower to go put up that many signs in that short period of a time. And then that way also to create a list for our most frequent, the people that we know have this issue when we put the Frost Law, the concrete, the excavators, the furniture companies, the people we know that are here, they're in our community, get them on a list, get them blasted out with an email, along with having the website updated, so that that's kind of how we deal with the outreach and so that people know it's there. We've also gone through in that, this ordinance on first reading is, when the Frost Law goes into effect, it's limiting the gross weight of vehicles based upon axle, single tandem and tri. That also kind of brought us a little bit more into compliance with our own vehicles that we're putting on the road from a Highway Department standpoint, during Frost Laws even. So there's a little bit of leeway there. And then we are clear on what we are exempting, empty trucks, school buses, garbage trucks, fire emergency vehicles, and then the commodity transport, that's basically the farmer's exemption for when they're moving their commodities from the field out to wherever they're changing the ownership of those. And then with, when the Frost Law goes into effect, I've kind of now migrated to page two of the proposed ordinance, you can still get a permit, that permit will go through the Highway Department. That permit will have, must have, a preferred route, so that that way, and a map attached. It requires the person getting the permit to get a copy of that permit along with the map. You guys have the permit and a map, and then the Sheriff's Department gets a copy of the permit and the map. We have an officer who we- who will be enforcing that, so then he has those, so he knows where these- where these drivers are going. The permit will be $100. It's a good per event. What that means is, is that if I have an- if an excavator is attempting to move, to go out and mobilize somewhere, he needs to go from point A to point B, that's an event. If we happen to have a very long Frost Law and we're in the third week of a Frost Law and there needs to be a B to C move, that's a separate event, that's another permit, that's another map. And frankly, what we're attempting to do there is that if they're- $100 isn't meant to be punitive, and it's not meant to obviously fill any county coffers up very quickly. So the point of it is, is that if you are able to wait, you would wait. If you aren't able to wait, it's not a significant enough amount of money that you would be handcuffed into not doing that. So we want to encourage the permits, but we want to have enough carrot and stick there that, you know, we're able to not just have the permits swallow the Frost Law itself.
Does that vary from the original Frost Law we had?
The original Frost Law, we- permits were free and basically 100% at the discretion of the Highway Superintendent. The issue we had with that is that we've had, depending on administration, we've had everything from, we give everybody a permit for free, which then begs the question of why you have a Frost Law in effect. Or you give nobody a permit, which that caused other problems as far as normal, everyday activities that just can't- that just have to occur. I think the glaring example we had last year was a family moving from somewhere, you know, and I don't mean from Portage to Valvo or Valvo to Portage, it was somewhere out west to here, and they just, at that point in time, didn't have a way to get here, and that just wasn't a legal way to get here, and that just wasn't a good situation that we found ourselves in. It also allows the Highway Department to put any other reasonable conditions designed to protect the road infrastructure. So, that catch-all phrase is meant to be, if we have, and an easy example, if we have an excavator that's mobilizing 80,000 pounds, the Highway Department could say, hey, we would like you to do that maybe, if possible, in two loads, maybe if there's some reason a time of day would help or something like that, they're able to deal with that just so that we keep these things moving. The violations, the way we're dealing the violations, it's going to kind of have a little bit of, a little bit of give at the beginning, and then not a whole lot of give after that. So, you, if you are in violation of your permit, in other words, you're off route, that is a violation, okay? Or if you don't have a permit, that's a violation, or if you're violating one of the special conditions that has been put on. But your first bite at that apple is a $500 fine. Now, if you're in violation of the permit, you're, you know, if you're making multiple violations on one trip, that will be doubled up. But ultimately, the goal of this was, the first one's a $500 fine.
And it was $2,500 before, right?
Well, it was based upon how much you were over.
Oh, okay.
So it was roughly a dollar for however many, so this one starts off at 500. If you don't have, if that's your first offense or you've had no other offenses within 24 months, it's a $500 fine. It starts to escalate quickly. If you're on your second violation in 24 months, we jump to $2,500. If you're on your third violation within 24 months, it jumps to $5,000. The reason for that is, is that some of the feedback, or a lot of the feedback we got from the general public was that it kind of felt like the way we, the way the ordinance was written and how much leeway there was or wasn't within the ordinance for the judges, there was, if you made an honest mistake, I put that in quotes, if you made an honest mistake, it was a significant penalty out of the gate. This is trying to address that by starting off with, get a permit, that's why we're trying to deal with the outreach of the signs, and then that's why it's escalating as quickly as possible. And if frankly, if this seems to not be, after a year or two, doesn't seem to be getting people's attention, we will change the numbers and escalate it more quickly if need to be. But ultimately, we want to give people a chance to make the mistake, if possible, still $500 is still no small sum of money, plus core costs. So, that's the, that's the fine structure. The enforcement and the distribution of funds has not changed, still split between the Sheriff's Department and the Highway Department. The enforcement is still between the Sheriff's Department and the Prosecutor's Office, so no changes there. But basically, that is kind of how we've tried to redo this Frost Law in a way that we can protect the roads, make it more straightforward for the enforcement officer to be able to enforce. The signs will be much simpler. We're able to put a single axle, a tandem axle, and a tri-axle picture of vehicles up on the sign, along with their designated limits of tons for those vehicles on the sign, along with the website, so we kind of lose the, some of the confusion that was inherent in the, in the current ordinance. So I think this is the path that, after many meetings, we've kind of circled back around to and put together. Be happy to answer any questions.
I think, I think the signs year-round is going to, it's part of an educational piece, that people will see them year-round and now, just not 30 days, and then they go on. So I think that's important. I also know that last year, we approved having an admin in the Highway Department full-time. That was the other thing that was really hurting us, too, is that we weren't really staffed at the Highway Department to take all these calls for free permits. And so now I think this ordinance sort of now wraps around how we're staffed and that we can handle these things better. You have the personnel now to be able to do these things, so there, like a lot of things up here, there are a lot of things to hit on, and I think we've, with the Sheriff's Department and everybody's working together here, I think we have something now that we can work from and go forward. These kind of things can always be tweaked and they can always be adjusted based on what we're seeing out there, but I think this is a great start. So, and I want to thank you guys for putting this all together because this is, again, was a lot of work. And it's a different kind of work, but it's a lot of work, so I commend everybody.
I think it'll, just the time savings will pay for itself. You know, we used to spend two or three days a year putting up and taking down Frost Law signs.
I have a question, Scott. It says here that each permit shall only be valid for the completion of one overweight load.
Correct.
Well, how would we, how would we, on the permit, are they putting the date in which they planned to transport?
Yes.
Okay. Date and route. So if they're caught on the, they're caught on the road the next day? They don't have a, they don't have a yellow permit? They're in violation.
Yeah, we, even the permit has a start and stop timeline, so, you know, we can say, we can put on whatever time we say, you know, you need to move between 10 o'clock and noon.
Or-
Or whatever.
At daybreak, or-
That's whatever hours we put on there is what it is.
Yes, so this is very straightforward compared to the last one, before when you lived in the last Frost Law, you get four or five sheets, but compared, this is, you know, this is much more straightforward. You get a standard weight and everybody, the signs look like you said, the signs and our pictures, and then have our address, our phone number, the website, all this is going on the sign, and this clearly doesn't. So, that'd be good, instead of this gets approved and we start ordering them and getting them installed as quick as possible.
Yep, and I think it also just makes it significantly easier for the Sheriff's Department to be able to enforce it, which is, at the end of the day, the key element of this is being able to enforce it. The Sheriff's Department understands the limits, the citizens understand the limits, and it's just, again, that's why the permits are going there, so I'm envisioning if we have a Frost Law, which I'm assuming, based upon our current weather, we are going to have a Frost Law go into effect at some point in time here. You know, I'm expecting the officer to have a whole stack of permits so that he knows where people are supposed to be, what routes are supposed to be on, what times are supposed to be on, so he just has a much better idea of where to patrol, where to enforce, and clearly will know if people are off track because I think once he has permits on days and times, it's going to be clear where people should be and shouldn't be.
Yeah, so this is going to require, since we're amending an ordinance here, we're going to have to require a public hearing again, so what we're going to do is, we're going to suspend the commissioners' meeting, open up a public hearing, and we're going to give anybody in the audience three opportunities to either come forward to speak against or speak for. So, at that, at this time, I would like to offer anybody in the audience to come forward to speak against this amended ordinance. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this amended ordinance. Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this amended ordinance. First and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak for, in favor of this amended ordinance. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this amended ordinance. And third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor, in favor of this amended ordinance. And with that, the public hearing is closed. I'll open it up to the floor. This is first reading, and open it up to the board.
Do we have a number on that?
96-4 and 14-07.
No. It's like, Kathy, do you know it's going to be 19?
It should be, I believe, 1902.
1902.
We make a motion to approve ordinance number 1902, which includes repealing ordinances 96-4, 14-08, and 14-07.
Second. We have a motion and a second on first reading to approve amendment 19-02. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. We will have second reading on our next commissioner's agenda, unless something happens with the weather over here the next couple of weeks, and we may call an emergency meeting just to go ahead and do that, but right now, I think we're, you know, talking about Frost Laws in February is sort of weird, but it's sort of the reality of our weather here lately, so we'll keep an eye on those to make sure if we need to move it up a little bit, we can, we can do that. It's just getting us all together to do that, so, okay? Thank you to everybody involved.
Thank you. Thank everybody for all the work they did. Thank you.
Heavy lifting again. Next up, we have DLZ. This is a general services contract for the county. If you recall at the last meeting, we approved the general services agreement for American Structure Point. This is for DLZ for this year, and DLZ and American Structure Point were a general service contract engineering firms that we had last year as well, too. I'll open the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for DLZ general service contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we're going to have Skillman. Hi, Derek. What this is for is, we're going to be approving the release of the North County, that's the Portage complex, North County, bid package number two, and it will be advertised for bidding around mid-February. So, does anybody have any questions of Derek from Skillman? I know he's, they, we've all been working very closely with American Structure Point as they are the architect of this project, but this would allow the bid package number two to get on the street so we can start entertaining bids and start to firm up some more numbers. Any comments or questions from the commissioners?
Let's just do a motion for the, for the release of those bids.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to release and advertise for the bidding for bid package number two in the North County complex. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. So-
Thank you.
Keep our fingers- Keep our fingers crossed, falling prices, right?
Yep.
Like all the other projects. Next up, we're going to let, I'm going to turn this over to Derek here, and he's going to take us through these pay applications as we start going through those. That way, if there's any questions from anybody, Derek's right here to ask him. But the first one is for Gary Up Construction. Go ahead, Derek. Thank you.
Gary Up Construction, pay up number three for work at the Porter County Courthouse. Big categories, general trades, and the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred thirteen.
Do I just keep going? Any comments or questions of Derek?
Are we doing these one at a time as we go through them?
However you want to.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve pay up number three for the courthouse renovation in the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars and forty-five cents.
Second. We have a motion as second for pay up number three for Porter County courthouse renovation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Next one?
Gary Up Construction, pay up number five for the Porter County courthouse. This is for the masonry restoration category, in the amount of nine thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for pay up number five, Porter County courthouse rental. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Next one, Gary Up Construction, pay up number six for the Porter County courthouse renovation. This is the final payment for the masonry restoration contract, and this is the release of all their retainage.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion as second for pay up number six, Porter County courthouse rental, general contractor for exterior renovation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Next one, Gatlin Plumbing and Heating, pay up eighteen oh eight, three dash one for the Porter County courthouse. This is the plumbing in HVAC bid category, in the amount of eight thousand, nine hundred ninety-one.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for Gatlin Plumbing and Heating, pay up number eighteen oh eight, three dash one, all those, for the Porter County courthouse. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Next?
MCOR Hire Electric, pay up number three for the Porter County courthouse renovations. This is the electrical bid category, in the amount of sixty-four thousand, nine hundred twenty-eight dollars, seventy cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for MCOR Hire Electric, pay up number three for the Porter County courthouse renovation electrical work. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Number eleven, MCOR Hire.
Hey, Derek, can we just pause there a minute?
Absolutely.
Where are we at on the window replacement at the courthouse? Because I know that got delayed because of some of the shop drawings and things. But where are we looking at now when we're going to start redoing all those windows in that whole building?
He has all the square windows at his shop. The arched windows will be there next week, and we're planning on mobilizing and starting March first.
Oh, okay. So, right around the corner.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
We probably need to get with the judges again.
We've had some conversations, and we're in the works on that.
Number eleven.
Number eleven. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
MCOR Hire Electric, pay up number four for Porter County courthouse renovation, electrical bid category, in the amount of nine thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and nineteen cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a pay up number four for MCOR Hire Electric for the Porter County courthouse renovation. This is more electrical work. This is pay up number four. The one before was pay up number three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Actually, I forgot.
Yep.
Good. All right, next one is Pangier Corporation, pay up number five for work at the Expo Center, general trades contract, in the amount of ninety-one thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-five cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for Pangier Corporation, pay up number five for the Expo Center rental. This is for general trades, in the amount of ninety-one thousand, two forty-four, sixty-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. You folks ought to see that place. It's coming together real nice. Real nice. I think everybody's going to be very pleased. Sorry, go ahead, Derek. I'm doing my pitching here.
Right here. Next one, Pangier Corporation, pay up number five for the Expo Center. This is the metal studs, drywall, and acoustics bid category, in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars and ten cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for Pangier Corporation, pay up number five, Expo Center renovation, metal studs, drywall, and acoustical tile, in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars and ten cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Next one, Midwest Tile and Interiors, pay up number one for the Porter County courthouse. This is big category flooring, in the amount of nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-two dollars and twelve cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for Midwest Tile and Interiors, pay up number one for the Porter County courthouse for flooring. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Next one, Midwest Tile and Interiors, pay up number two for the Porter County courthouse renovation, big category five flooring, in the amount of eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for Midwest Tile and Interiors, pay up number two for the Porter, Porter County courthouse renovation. This is for flooring as well, too. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Next one, Midwest Tile and Interiors, pay up number three for the Expo Center renovations, big category floor, four for flooring, in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-five cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for Midwest Tile and Interiors, pay up three for Expo Center renovation, bid category number four, flooring. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Two more.
Next one, DA Dodd, pay up number five for the Expo Center renovations. This is the mechanical bid category, in the amount of eighty-four thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-three cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for DA Dodd, pay up number five for Expo Center. This is mechanical, mechanical work. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Last one.
Continental Electric, pay up number five for the Expo Center renovations. This is the electrical bid category, in the amount of seventy-five thousand, one hundred and five dollars and seventy-four cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for Continental Electric, pay up number five for Expo Center renovation, electrical. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Derek. Anybody's wondering why we're having some pay ups back-to-back. It's really a beginning-of-the-year type of thing. We got caught off on the draw cycle. So, that's why there's two pay ups for some of these things. I know if you're seeing that, that's, that's why. It was just the timing of, of when it all happened. Next up is the Sheriff and Major Gary Gear, and whomever you want to bring up, whomever else you want to bring up.
The first one we have is a first reading on a new fund. As the Commissioners are aware, we did the, the SRO contract agreement with the Porter Township School Board. This is the follow-up to that to have a, a fund in which to deposit those monies into with the county. So, this is first reading on that new fund.
Motion to approve the new fund to pass the council for.
We gotta, we gotta open up a public hearing again. I gotta get to do one of those again. Okay, so, we're going to pause the Commissioners' meeting and open up a public hearing. First of all, we're going to do the same drill again. We're going to open it up to anybody wishing to speak for or against this ordinance. So, what we'll do first is, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance. Second call, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance. Third and final call, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance. Anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anybody wishing to come forward, second call, to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final opportunity, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? And with that, the public hearing is closed, and we'll now resume the Commissioners' meeting. I'll open up the floor to the Commissioners.
Repeat my previous motion.
We have a motion?
A motion with discussion.
We need a second. I'll second it. So, we have a motion as second, discussion.
Sheriff, where will, or Scott, who, who's going to manage this fund?
Well, we're going to create the fund, and it will go through the Auditor's Office. And then, when Portage is making their payments, the money will go into that fund, and then the council will budget off of that fund.
The council will budget off of it.
Correct.
All right. That's, that's the only question I had.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Second reading, next meeting.
All right, the next one is going to feel a lot like the same. We're doing a fund. It's for the Indiana Virtual Education Foundation. This is an agreement that the Sheriff's Department has with our virtual school, with the, the Indiana Virtual Education Foundation. This allows the Sheriff's Department, it has some responsibility to verify students that kind of fall off the radar, and as, as they're doing that, they get paid, I believe, ten dollars a student, per active student. This, again, opens up, creates a fund for the Auditor's Office to deposit the funds, and then the council to make a budget off of.
So, with that, we will suspend the Commissioners' meeting again, open up a public hearing, same drill. Anybody wishing to come forward, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Anybody with, second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against creating this fund? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this fund? First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this fund? And with that, this public hearing is closed. We'll open up the Commissioners' meeting again, and I'll open it up to the floor.
Motion to establish a new fund for the Indiana Virtual Education Foundation, first reading.
Second. We have a motion as second to establish a new fund, first reading, for the Indiana Virtual Education Foundation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. No more, no more first readings. Okay. Three, next one up, two-one-nine Media Consulting LLC, a consulting agreement for social media. You want to give us an update on that?
Well, we're in compliance with what you put out, and we're just redoing the contract with her. She does our Facebook and all our social media.
Oh, okay.
I've reviewed the contract. It's in good form.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion as second for two-one-nine Media Consulting LLC. This is a consulting agreement for the Sheriff's Department for social media. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Next, we're going to go to purchase of vehicles, and you have the floor. Gary Gear.
Thanks. You see before you that we put four quotes out, starting with Lewis and Ford, with the state QPA, and also Lake Shore Ford, Curry Ford, and Artillon Submit. So, we're asking that purchase nine vehicles in Lake Shore Ford must be Lewis quote.
Walk through the money a little bit.
Sure. Want me to read them all?
No. Big numbers.
Okay. Lake Shore Ford, single vehicles, thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Not asking for nine vehicles. Total cost of vehicles were three hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty. Additionally, was the price of equipped vehicles were fifty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-one, and fifty-five cents. So, it was a total of three hundred and sixty-four thousand, and twenty-one dollars, and fifty-five cents. In the Sheriff's general budget, we had, he has fifty thousand, we're asking for three fourteen, twenty-one, fifty-five.
Thank you. Question, on Gary, on these, you have four different types of vehicles here. What's the breakdown on the nine for these type of vehicles? I just sort of went from an inventory purpose standpoint.
Well, we're just asking just for the Ford Explorer, the Ford Explorer. I put four different vehicles, just in case throughout the year, that if we do need a different kind, type of vehicle, that way we have the option, and all the quotes are already.
And then you got, okay.
Yeah.
So, what you're looking for, though, the nine, is the two thousand twenty Ford Explorers?
Correct.
Okay. From Lake Shore.
From Lake Shore.
Yeah, I got that. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Major, you, are you going to take, you're taking nine vehicles out of circulation when, once these become road-ready?
Correct. That's the only option, yes.
And, and you're going to be sure to contact the insurance company to let them know that...
Our position.
All right. Great.
And just remind me, I know we're in a hurry, but when's the sheriff sale, October, November?
Usually October.
And it normally takes you about how long to get these vehicles and get them outfitted?
About seven months. To get the vehicles...
Present, and, and then we outfit it.
Can drive them around.
Well, this year's a little bit different, because they're changing the vehicle a little bit. They went from a twenty-eighteen, basically, to a twenty-twenty. So, they're not even going to start making the cars till May. So, we probably won't even get vehicles till July, September, October. It's going to be close to auction time. So, it's going to be a couple of months.
Okay, good. And, and Gary, if you, if you can, because I think this, our office needs to start keeping track of that, is, those nine vehicles, you take out of circulation, the ones you're, you're planning on putting in, in the, in the auction. You give us a list of those?
Absolutely.
So, we have that as well. All right.
We also, we also submit titles or the Commissioners' office. They have to be signed before they can be auctioned.
Okay.
So, there's like a, a two, two layers.
I just want to give the Commissioners a better idea of how many cars we're getting each year, you know, from one, from one year to the next, because it, it does vary.
And they're all included in the pickaxe.
Yeah, I think our insurance carrier's a little more proactive, too, than maybe what has happened in the past as well, too. So, just maybe a little bit.
Everybody needs to be proactive. Okay, so...
We need a motion?
A motion to approve the request to purchase vehicles with three hundred and fourteen thousand, twenty-one dollars and sixty-five cents coming from the CCE?
Lake, Lake Shore.
Um, let's just say Commissioners' budget.
From the Commissioners' budget.
So, what are those?
Can't remember.
And Lake Shore Ford, twenty-twenty Ford Explorer.
It's in there. I think.
And equipping them. It's a pretty convoluted motion.
Are you done?
I think so.
Second. We have a motion as second for the purchase of nine two thousand twenty Ford Explorers from Lake Shore Ford, for the individual cost of the car, thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, in the total amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand, twenty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And...
I think that's it?
That's it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Yep. Stay safe out there. Next, Expo Center, Lori Daly. We're going to do catering and concession contracts for two thousand nineteen. And first, we have catering. So, why don't you give us the names of the catering? I know you can read. But good morning, Lori.
Good morning. This year, we have Leroy's Astors, which was a silver color, and then new this year, we have Martinis in the market.
And then on concessions, because I think we can vote on all these at once. So, give them, give them all to us.
Concessions, the D and J, J and J, Leroy's, Gates, Suzie's, Hurry's split in the two separate concession companies. That's why you see, it's Josh Hurry, and then the Country or Maine.
Huh. Interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Those same owners?
Kind of. I think Chris left them split off. Josh handles a couple very specific events, and then the Country or Maine handles other.
I think Tim has sort of moved off into a cleaning company or something, too, right?
Julie retired.
Julie retired.
So, Tim's kind of taken over with back.
Okay, gotcha. St. Pete's just moving it around.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to approve the catering and concession contracts for two thousand nineteen.
Second. We have a motion as second to approve the catering and concession contracts for two nineteen, two thousand nineteen, as noted on the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Facilities. Chris? We have, first up here, we have Mitsubishi Electric UPS Systems Group Maintenance Contract for the Sheriff's Department, in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, and that's an annual contract. I think I got it right. Anything you want to add?
No. It's the same price as it's been in the past, and it's just a renewal contract.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for Mitsubishi Electric UPS Systems Group Maintenance Contract for the Sheriff's Department, the amount of four thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Total disposal. What do you got here?
That's new disposal contracts for Sheriff's Garage, the administration building and the courthouse.
Okay.
And the savings monthly... And the savings monthly on that is about five hundred and eighty dollars a month.
Oh, good. So we'll see some money coming back to the county. That's great.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion as second for total disposal contracts for Sheriff's Garage, Admin Center and Valparaiso Courthouse. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Chris. Thanks for holding everything together up there. We're getting close. Especially last week. That was a, yeah.
Doesn't kill you, make you stronger.
That's right.
Don Wilson. We have Nitco for a Wi-Fi upgrade at the Expo Center. Let's see, Lori stayed.
The existing system was installed in two thousand twelve and it's dated itself. They actually started yesterday demoing the existing cables because they needed to get the roof painted, so.
I guess the internet's here to stay, so.
Motion to approve.
That's right, Grandpa.
Oh, man. Woo, Laura did, had no gray in it.
Second, second.
We have a motion as second for the Wi-Fi upgrade for Nitco, Nitco at the Expo Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. We will have Wi-Fi fast. Yep, thanks, Don. Highway Department, Rich Sexton Supervisor, we're gonna award bids for the two thousand nineteen supplies. We're gonna open them up?
No, we did last meeting.
Oh, we did last meeting, that's right. That was all that opening we did. All those paper cuts. That they got down there. So, what's your recommendation? What's your recommendation? Yeah, sorry.
All bids except for Al Warren for fuel. All the rest of them are just here, they're at different prices, different companies, different districts that we have are all different prices, so we use one fuel supplier.
What was the exception?
Al Warren.
Al Warren, for the fuel? Okay. Motion to approve?
Second.
As noted, with the exception.
With the exception.
We have a motion as second to award bids for two thousand nineteen supplies for the Highway Department, as noted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next up, additional appropriation, request for Fund eleven sixty-nine account twenty-two six-ten, in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars to purchase road salt due to price increase of twelve dollars per ton. Any comments, questions? We've, we've laid a lot of salt so far this year, haven't we?
Certainly have. We, we, our guys, we work from January sixth to January thirtieth, five day off. It snowed every day during M O K weekend and they were out, six, eight hours a day. China limited and all of our trucks are calibrated, so we're putting down as minimal salt as possible and trying to keep the roads safe and clear.
First current inventory, oh, sorry, Jim. Well, you're doing a good job. I, I agree. What, what is our current inventories right now for salt and what are your guys' anticipation? I know you're not, you can't predict the weather. But we also don't want to end up with a ton of salt sitting in our barns over the summer either, so that's why I was just seeing where, now we're getting to the tricky part.
Yeah, we have about two thousand ton right now on hand. When we put on a state bid back in July, June or July, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was before we came in, so maybe in May.
Yeah, you have to put a state bid in that we put in for seven thousand ton. We have to buy a minimum of twenty percent, so fifty a hundred ton. Right now, we only have enough to buy like fifty, a hundred, sixty ton. So I'd like to be able to buy a little bit more than that and have a little bit on hand.
Better be safe than sorry. Yeah, no, I. And I was just asking because it's your first year going through it and I'd like to get a little more knowledge on how you guys make these decisions, that's all.
Yep, it's, if we kind of, the good thing is we do end the year on, with this extra money, I'm sorry, with this extra money, what will be good is next winter, we may not order old salt this year, but if that one starts next November, so if we have another November like we did this year, we'll actually have money to have buy salts in case and it'd be plenty to buy on our bid.
Any other questions?
No, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second for additional appropriation request for Fund eleven sixty-nine. I mean, Dan Whitten walks in right when we talk about an additional appropriation. I mean, Dan, there hasn't been one on this whole agenda. I swear to God there hasn't. I swear to gosh there hasn't.
You can feel it.
He just walks in, I'm like, are you kidding me? Welcome. This is for salt though. Additional appropriation request for Fund eleven sixty-nine account twenty-two six-ten in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand to purchase road salt due to price increase of twelve dollars per ton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next up, transfer of funds from Fund eleven seventy-six, account twenty-three six-twenty in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars to account for eleven three hundred for overtime. And you want to just give us a little bit of?
Since we didn't have a day off, we still have weeks at road, so we, like I said, we have, Martin, we paid holiday off, but we, that weekend was almost a forty thousand dollar overtime payoff. Just and we, and we were bare minimum, getting roads cleaned up. Now we've been trying to, like I said, keep it under, we've been trying to just give them enough time in specific areas so they clean up and safe again. Last year, we had, we had a very large payoff for overtime and then two thousand seventeen, it was pretty small, so we didn't have any winter. The reason for seventy-five thousand is looking forward to the rest of the year as well. Over summer kind of operations and paving and stuff, sometimes those people, so we have some money for that in November, December, winter months, and this January through March that we're having right now.
Please express our appreciation to you guys. That's a lot of days in a row.
And it just so happens, you know, these snowstorms came on weekends instead of.
Yeah.
I was thinking, trust me, I was thinking the same thing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second for transfer of funds from Fund eleven seventy-six to account twenty-three six-twenty in amount seventy-five thousand for eleven three hundred overtime. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Thanks, guys. Keep it going.
Love the guys.
Yep. Next, we got Development, Stormwater Management, Bob Thompson. First up, we got a performance guarantee for High Meadows Subdivision. This is a renewal. Good morning, Bob.
Good morning.
Again, so this is another two-year, a two-year renewal?
It's two years renewal, but we asked them to add additional on this because there's construction traffic that drives through High Meadows to go into Stonebridge Subdivision, which is being developed just to the south of that, so they have that in there as well, so that way the roads are covered in there.
So that's why it's up to two seventy-two?
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second for a performance guarantee for High Meadows Subdivision for the streets. This is a renewal and we recommend approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next up, we got another one.
Tower Meadows, so this one, so everyone's not confused, Tower Meadows has a performance guarantee in place for
Correct.
For the subdivision as it stands. As we all remember, Tower Meadows had all but one lot purchased. Eventually purchased by the home builder.
Oltoff.
Oltoff. We've talked briefly about the one lot sitting out there that was kind of in litigation, bankruptcy, purgatory. What we have found out and what's being requested for the Commissioners is that that one lot has a performance guarantee attached to it. Frankly, we don't need it and there's some questions as to the viability of it.
Correct.
However, Citizens Bank is attempting to clear it off in a efficient manner with a motion and a second here by the, by the Commissioners, but we are covered in the, we just renewed Tower Meadows guarantee.
And that's under LLC called Bud's Plus.
Bud's Plus, right.
Correct. This is the, this was a letter of credit that was approved in two thousand and eleven that has an automatic renewal that's under the old development, name of M K W L C. That has gone bankrupt. So we're covered by Bud's Plus, as Scott mentioned.
Okay.
Okay, a motion to release the performance guarantee for Tower Meadows.
Second. We have a motion as second to release the performance guarantee for Tower Meadows. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next up, we're gonna ask Structure Point.
Yes.
And our traffic engineer, Matt, to join us. This is, if you recall, back in the fall, the Board of Commissioners approved a contract for American Structure Point, who is a endorsed engineer for I dot, for the state of Indiana, to do traffic studies for US six and Highway forty-nine. The report is now coming back to us and this is the presentation of that report. Set the table, I'll turn it over to Bob.
And I want to introduce Patrick O'Connor, who's with Structure Point. Patrick was the one who worked on this report and was corresponding back and forth with Matt Catalik in our office and myself, so I'm gonna turn it over to Patrick for the presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're in the process of completing this report. We've worked back and forth with the county on a lot of the assumptions we made. We're getting to the point where we're racking it out to this point. A quick overview of, excuse me, quick overview of the study, US six, from Meridian, Calumet, obviously include the interchange there, which is, well, the hospital, front of Road West, and Journey Way. We looked at four scenarios, an existing scenario, so based on this year's traffic. We looked at an additional scenario, which was twenty twenty-eight, with ten years of background growth, which assumes just a background growth rate, so one percent. Different what we typically see without any large developments going on or any anticipated, anything that we know of. And that was to just get a background of, if there's no big, large development, what do we need to do? The other scenario we looked at was an existing scenario, basically utilizing the existing lanes in four twenty twenty-eight with the site generated traffic. So we went through the zoning and the anticipated developments over the next ten years and said, these are realistically gonna be built at this percentage. What does the roadway system look like when that happens? And then the next scenario was with a proposed lane configuration, so that we said, okay, with all this development, here are the improvements that we anticipate being needed. Just a quick, the future lane use map, these are all the different areas we looked at. We looked at basically each individual parcel and decided, made recommendations on how much growth we would anticipate or what parcels would be developed in the next ten years. The one there at the hospital, which is labeled sixteen, we assumed fifty percent of that would be built out in the next ten years, so that was a pretty big impact. The rest of the, in most parts, the rest of the parcels, we assumed ten percent over the next ten years. It ended up resulting in approximately one point nine million square feet of development, another two hundred and fifty acres, I'm sorry, that's two hundred and fifty dwelling units between single family and multifamily, again, in this whole, in the whole study area.
So you were, you were seeing residential developing along that, that portion of the corridor?
There are some residential plans or within that, again, we didn't.
No, hold on, go back a slide. In that area, there, in that described area, they're talking about all of those potential residential units.
So there's R one out there, and again, there's two hundred, I think we looked at two hundred and fifty units in ten years, so not very many, especially since we're looking at multifamily in, in the area by the hospital.
Okay.
So, not a lot of units. Again, here's the breakdown, this is really detailed, but again, looks one point nine million square feet of the commercial office space, medical office building, and a couple different variants of that as well, and then also the dwelling units there. So for the ten years, we're looking at quite a bit. These are the net new site trips, so these are with some reductions for internal trips within the development, as well as some pass-by trips to the commercial and the PM. So the PM is almost four thousand trips exiting these developments and going back on the roadway, better new trips from today. Kind of hard to see, but this is the PM level service angle, so this is what we base our recommendations on. As you can see now, the first column, there's no red, so that's good in this case. Lots of A's and Bs for those existing intersections. As well as the scenario two, which is the ten-year build with a limited background growth, so it's one point one percent. So as you can see, again, a couple more Cs, but still mostly A and Bs. The intersection of Journey Way and US six is currently unsignalized, so we anticipate it to remain unsignalized if there's nothing, no major developments in the area. Their delay is excessive, but that's a modeling issue that will work itself out in terms of doesn't necessarily warrant a signal at this point or in ten years. But people aren't necessarily gonna wait two minutes, egg, but they will make a right turn or a left turn, so it's really just a kind of a modeling issue. Scenario three A is the horizon year build, with all of our projections for the anticipated land uses. You can see this is where we get into quite a bit of delay and a lot of these intersections with S and E, that primarily all of the intersections we have issues. The scenario three B is where we take that same traffic, but then make recommendations or recommend improvements for, to get to an acceptable level of service. And you can see here that the Fs are gone. We still do have some Es by movement, but no level of service for an overall intersection less than a D. Again, this is just during the peak hour that we looked at. So these are essentially the recommendations. You can kind of see on US six itself, there's a color-coded. Between Meridian and Journey Way, there's a proposed four lane segment, is what we're anticipating the traffic we need on the west end of this area, as well as the east end between Calumet and the front of Road East. Between Journey Way and southbound forty-nine exit, we're looking at a proposed six lane segment to handle all the traffic.
Six lanes?
So.
So we're a little underbuild out there slightly.
And then as well, the segment between the interchanges, the intersections four and five, you'll see it right on there. And that is, we, we need widening for additional lanes. Now, we didn't necessarily get into the opportunity to look at alternative intersection types, but we do need additional receiving lanes for the south, northbound, for the northbound left coming off of forty-nine, as well as the dual westbound left back on forty-nine. So bridges need to be widened. It doesn't necessarily need to be a six lane section, but it needs to have additional pavement. And that's, we didn't, as part of this, we had a look in alternative intersections like roundabout or dual time, any other kind of crossover, so. And then there's, in each individual intersection, this is the lane, the proposed geometry, and so there definitely are a couple extra lanes at somebody that approaches the U C. There is a lane drop there at the between Journey Way and Meridian there, so that's where it goes and sticks back and forth.
You want to speak up, because I think Mr. Whitten's taking notes, so.
There's lanes, got my piss.
So again, this, this is based on, the big driver of that was looking at fifty percent of the development out there by the hospital, along Journey Way, in the front of Road East, so that was where a lot of this additional traffic came from. Or going, going to or coming from in this case.
So to, to sort of put this all into context, as to why the, why this board went, went out and got these studies, Highway six is owned by the state of Indiana. And they have a five-year plan for improvements. In order to get this project, so-called or hopeful project, into the five-year plan of I dot, we had to prepare this presentation and study. So based off, you know, based off what we're finding here, then we would, you know, either approve or not approve this study and then it would be sent off to I dot and then there would be some work downstate legislatively to see if we can. would be some work downstate legislatively to see if we can get this into a plan, and get the state to get, you know, let us know when they're going to do that. So that's, just to put it in perspective, and I don't really see this being any dollars that the counties, our county would have to do unless we had some remedial lane work to do on Meridian or Calumet, which isn't the big-ticket stuff. But I think, I think that the study speaks for itself. I'm going to put our traffic engineer, our newly anointed traffic engineer, Matt, on the spot here, and maybe he can sort of give us his thoughts from the county, now that we have the study. I'd like to hear from you and Bob as well, as you guys represent our, represent us in this type of stuff, so.
I'll let, I just want to add a couple things, just so everybody knows, AM, peak hours that they're referring to, that Patrick was referring to, is basically from 7:00 to 9:00, PM, 4:00 to 6:00. So, that PM peak hour, they're adding over 4,000 trips on this. And even with the improvements, getting it to a level of service D, just so everybody understands what a level of service D in that sense is, if you're driving through there, there's a huge amount of traffic in there, you hit one of those signals, and with all the traffic there, turns green, you may not make it through. You might have to wait for a cycle to go through, before you go through. It's going to still be slow, but it's going to be moving.
Well, I know.
Yes. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You're correct. One more back.
Yeah.
One more back. There you go. So, you know, the difference between scenario two and 3A is what's going to happen the next 10 years, you know, if NDOT does not fix US 6, or make improvements to US 6. So, you know, in the scenario 3A, we have a very reasonable build-out of the land use around, adjacent to it. Two, we have no build-out, and it just has normal background growth. And so, you know, we will start to see a lot of complaints from this area, even though it's, you know, NDOT land property, the road is. We're going to see something in between there, and, you know, I think it's great that we are getting this study done to rid us of NDOT, because we want to catch this before we get to that red zone, where there's just a lot of queuing. And, you know, this is an important corridor of the county, you know, we have our hospital there, it's the way that people from Valparaiso go to the hospital, I should know, as I just had a baby there. You know, we're planning our route, and it went down Meridian to US 6, to the hospital. So, we don't want to stop up those intersections, we want to create as much free flow as possible, and make as much improvement, so I think the study helps support that decision, and that's my approval.
Good. Well, you know, the awesome build on, what Commissioner Goodwin's saying is that, you know, it's not our road, but I think the commissioners, along with individuals like yourself, the Plan Commission staff, I mean, we realize what a integral, a critical part that that road plays in our traffic patterns. I mean, there's only four roads, and one of them's a toll road, that run east and west from Route 30 going north, that you can even go east and west, without cutting through a bunch of subdivisions or whatever, and Route 6 is one of them. It is definitely changing over the last 10 or 15 years, it's vastly different, the traffic patterns, the traffic count, it's vastly different than it was then, and we're just trying to stay ahead of that. And, and as Jeff pointed out, to gather our information, and get that information to the state, and to, you know, the lawmakers, to see if we can get on that list, so. It's reacting and not, it's taking action and not reacting.
And I'd also like to just finalize, you know, when we started on this process, Representative Soliday helped us out quite a bit, and I know that Structure Point's going to be handing this off and presenting this to IDOT, but I know that Ed Soliday will be not too far behind it to lobby on our behalf, and I think that's, so I think we have all different parts of government sort of working on this to come up with a resolution. And, so we're, so I think today, Scott, do we have to like accept this...
Yes.
Study officially?
Yes.
And then we can move it off to IDOT for delivery?
I have a question, did we receive this hard copy?
We have it up in the office, we're, we just really kind of completed the review of it, as you mentioned, Patrick was saying he was going to finish a few...
Would it be a big deal if each one of the commissioners had their own copy?
We can send down to you today what we have, it's PDF form, electronic.
Yeah, that's fine, that's perfect. I'd just like to have it.
There might be a few touch-ups.
I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of a few people up in Liberty Township that, as soon as they read this in the paper, they're going to...
Oh.
They're going to have a thousand questions.
Well, just remember, that study is not final-final, but I don't think there'll be too much tweaking, right? Okay. So, I'll open up the floor to the board.
Motion to accept the US 6 traffic study.
Second. We have a motion of second to accept the US 6 traffic study, presented and done, and completed by American Structure Point, and we also, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Get down to IDOT and hand-deliver that, because time is... I'm looking at you, Chris Murphy. Man, I want you. Next up, we have message board purpose, purchase. This is a sole source quote that we've received. These are, for all of you out there, these are portable message boards, they're orange, that are on wheels, and we can, we can communicate to people in traffic situations with all the stuff we have going on. We've decided that the county needs to own these. I think we've also done some, oh, that's down later, we'll do the MOUs, but this is for the purchase of these equipment.
Total price is $36,800.
Motion to approve.
Second. And that's for two, right, Scott?
It's for two of them.
Correct. $36,800. Okay, we have a motion of second for message board purpose, purchase. This is a sole source quote, for $36,800. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Department procurement policy.
Yes. This mirrors exactly what you all saw earlier with the Stormwater Management Board today. Now what we're doing is, we're putting this, so that way it's a total for the entire department, so that way it covers the Highway Engineering Fund, the Building, Planning and Zoning Fund, and GIS, it will now cover all of our sections that are up there within the department there.
So it's a roofers' policy, covers everything?
Covers, yes. Motion to approve.
We have a motion of second for department procurement policy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Next up, Bridge 84.
This is an agreement that Matt's been working on with USI Consultants. First, I need to mention that Sea Arba Group is the one who's designing the bridge, but they do not have a right-of-way procurement section within Sea Arba. So, we had some great work with USI as far as with Bridge 126, so we asked USI if they would give us a proposal for it. We need to buy a small section of right-of-way for Bridge 84, it's just nine feet on the north side.
That slope.
So it gives us a nice gradual slope. We worked through this between Mike, Matt, and I on this, and we agreed that we felt that the additional right-of-way with the nice gradual slope into it would be better than guardrail through this entire section.
You said Bridge 85?
Bridge 84.
84. Where's that at?
This is on 800 South, or what they call Sigler Road, west of Hebron, over Branch of Dogleg Ditch.
Down there by the coyotes, and... This will allow us, this will also allow us to maintain that bridge better, too, with those slopes with regards to mowing and...
Correct.
And other things, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the supplemental agreement for Bridge 84.
Second. We have a motion of second for Bridge 84, supplemental agreement with USI Consultants. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Last but not least, we have a memorandum of understanding for the message boards that we just bought, and this is a MOU between the Highway Department, Stormwater, Engineering, Highway Engineering, so we're basically...
At Expo.
And Expo, because Expo's storing it, so Expo will be in there, too, so if they, during the fair, we can also use it, too. So, everybody, this MOU will determine who's responsible for what, who takes care of what, all those little things, so.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion of second for an MOU for the message boards. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. She's not storing them?
No.
I'm just kidding. Motion carries. Wood and wooden law. Anybody wishing to address this board? And with that, this board stands in recess. Thank you for the long meeting.